This evening?
No, no, that can't happen. Clerk is not here.
Go ahead.
She's not here. Till she gets back, then we'll start.
Father God, thank you for the divine promises you have given to us in your word. Thank you that you have not left us to fend for ourselves as we navigate through this sin-filled world, but that you have commanded us to ask for wisdom, knowledge, and common sense, which you will give generously to all, and so we do. Bestow upon the Freeport City Council members the ability to conduct themselves in a state-like manner towards Mayor Miller and themselves. Give the city council members skills to apply wisdom, knowledge, and common sense when introducing and voting on legislation to create new laws for the city. Negotiating and approving the city budget, ensuring proper allocation of resources, monitoring city agencies to ensure they effectively serve the community, representing constituents' interest in addressing community issues, and collaborating with other council members and local officials for effective governance. And Lord, last but not least, help each city council member effectively execute the positions to which they were elected and you installed them by seeking wise counsel and by being prepared before council meetings so they can make informed decisions. All blessings, honor, glory, and power belong to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And now we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Alder Person's Clem?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Simmons?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Stacy?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Sanders?
Here.
And Sellers?
Here.
If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Sanders.
Pledge of Allegiance. Stooded by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number five is approval of the minutes from the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on August 11th, 2025. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments? We have one signed in. Ann? Annette Mason? I'm not sure. Did you want to speak beforehand?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to item number seven, which is the presentation. I'm sorry.
I think Mr. Glick is applying to speak. He probably just didn't sign up.
Oh, did you have something on the agenda you wanted to talk about? Please.
I'm Ryan Glick. I live in Freeport. About in last year in July, I found out about this whole supplier issue. It took me from July till about December to get everything situated. I reached out to the city. Bryan Bridge contacted me. I told them the issue. When I tried to, I got the paper from Nordic. I called them to cancel it. I got forced back in with AEP when I wanted to go to ComEd. And I finally got back with ComEd for, on December 17th of last year. So that was a horrible six months I had to deal with, with my ComEd bill being switched in. Took still almost six months to be back where I wanted. And I'm on low income, so it's like, okay. So just want to bring that to you guys' attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is a presentation regarding the maintenance of landscaping at city-owned lots. Lynette Williams with the Pretzel Gardeners.
Hello, Council and City of Freeport. I found something quite by accident that so perfectly aligns with the reason maybe that we're here today to even discuss community pride. And somebody had asked about it on Facebook, and this was this gentleman's reply, and it fits perfectly. Building a sense of civic duty in a community is about inspiring people to feel ownership, responsibility, and pride in the well-being of the place they live. It requires a mix of education, engagement, culture building, and opportunities for action. That hits our group square on the head. You want to dim the light so you can see the pictures that we took. In, I am Lynette Williams. I have lived here 50 years. Mayor Miller called me in July of '24, I think is when we started this. And she was looking to get the area cleaned up around city-owned lots within the community right before Tuddy Baker days. And this is what it looked like. That might even be good in some instances because we've pulled a lot of stuff. Anyway, what happened in '24 was we pulled, I gathered this crew. See here. My senior lady's here behind me. And we pulled this whole lot, or this whole area along the parking lot. And we thought, oh, and, you know, we come back in 30 days. And no such luck. It looked just as bad as it had earlier. So when we started out '25, we were a little bit better prepared. First off, we knew that we needed a new plan, at least for this specific area. And so we gathered in, what was it, February of '25? And I knew that we were going to need to do some deeper cleaning, at least for our particular area. So with the help of the mayor and Greater Freeport Partnership, there were groups of people who were, I don't know whether they all volunteered or whether you like grabbed them by the neck and said, hey, come along, type of thing. But anyway, it ended up where the Tuddy Crossing sign near the Pecatonica River, the city was going to do. The Lincoln Douglas Rocket Stevenson and Liberty in the parking lot, the Master Gardeners were going to do. I don't have any pictures of these areas. The landscape on State Street that was north and south borders on Main, where Steve Schlap was going to do. And his area has been featured this today, I think is the post from GFP. There was landscaping at the corner of Main and Adams near the Raleigh Building that was assigned to the city. Walnut and Spring Landscaping, Trish Vandenberg from the Father's House took care of that, along with anybody from her congregation. My Pretzel Gardeners took the, this municipal lot. And then the triangles at Locust and Main and Locust and Lincoln, the Bangsburg Agna kids did. Hello. This was not, it was, it was one of those things you start, you started in on it, and it was like, oh, my gosh, it's just getting worse and worse and worse. We ended up, what we ended up doing, here is my crew. Linda Simler is from the Farmer's Market. Paula Skanesny is not here. Ann Mason is here. Sharon Cook is here. Kathy Perkins is not here. They are my fellow pretzel pickers. Lorenzo Allen down there at the end, he, I became acquainted with him, and he has come along and helped us on various days. Robin Dole, you have one lone bush that's on the city landscaping property. I don't know if there was more before, but there's only one left. Robin Dole took that upon herself to do the trimming on it. And my friend Debbie Anderson of 40 years also helped us out. So anyway, we pulled weeds. We had to decide what was good, what we had. I am not a gardener. I have no idea, you know, it's like, is this a weed? Is this not a weed? Milkweed. Milkweed was a huge discussion. Somebody has taken the liberty of sprinkling a lot of milkweed seeds, or either that or we had pods at one point and they... Yeah, or birds or whatever, but we've got a lot of milkweed over there. We decided that we would keep anything that was next to the fences, anything that was close to the sidewalk, we were going to pull. That's still left us with a lot of milkweed out there. Let me think, where else am I at on my thought here? What we started doing was, we started at the corner of Exchange and Van Buren, in that corner where the steps come down, and just started bringing the mulch back. Anyway, we eventually discovered that there's weed barrier underneath there. And I swear, that weed barrier must have been there since Columbus came along because it was filled with weeds, which is the reason that we couldn't get any place by just taking care of the top layer, is because we had to get rid of the weed barrier, which is what we've done. We've pulled all that weed barrier up. We've laid down cardboard. We put mulch on top of that. Compliments to the city. Trying to think. Oh, yes, we transplanted. The corner of, at Van Buren and Douglas was totally, looked like just a grassy knoll. And it's huge. It's absolutely huge. I asked Leslie if these kids would come along and help us. Between them and us, we did it in four hours, but they did most of the work because pulling up the weed barrier was horrible, absolutely horrible. Right now in that corner, we've got down cardboard and then just mulch on top of it. The other corner's got a tree, but of course, the tree root, the tree is having its own ideas about how many extra sprouts it wants to come up, so we have to cut those back. We tried to replant as much as we could. Leslie came and took some irises. We took some of the irises and moved them along the edges. We had an opportunity to get lilies, no, I'm sorry. We transplanted the lilies. We got irises for free from a community member. And so we've, trying to make it as look the best we can with the limited resources we had. We discovered that, well, yes, but what was, what's, what's growing that's crazy?
Morning glory.
Morning glory. Looks beautiful, absolutely beautiful, but it takes over everything, absolutely everything, which is part of the reason for the cardboard being down because we were trying to cut out and kill the weed, weeds underneath it. I worked weekly with Pat Ingram from the Street Superintendent. He dropped us mulch. He picked, I would tell him how many bags we had. I would tell him that's, that's landscape waste. White bags are trash because we find people who, you know, the cup, the, you know, the sucker wrapper, the cigarette, they're using it as an ashtray, you know, literally, they're using it, and, oh, for their dogs too. That was the other thing they're using it for, very much so. Anyway, I kept track of the hours that my crew you did. My crew worked 134 hours.
Wow.
On this, which is approx, almost four weeks worth of work. Now, we did that in two- and three-hour increments because we're a group of seniors. We don't like the heat. We don't like the cold. But I'm figuring that we have saved the city somewhere around $2,700 by doing, by the manual labor. Obviously, right now, it takes us maybe an hour to go out there every other week because we're not fighting with the stuff that was underneath. I know that the parking lot is going to be improved at some point in the future. And, you know, water accessibility, electricity, and maybe just some solid cement. You've got a sign in the one corner, at the corner of Douglas and Van Buren, that's been there since George Gullrap was mayor. Maybe we don't need that anymore. Just ideas, just thoughts. Anyway, I could not have done it without these people, any of these people. I mean, this has just been fantastic. For those people who thought they had to give us advice, and we'd look at them and say, you want to help? Oh, no. They don't want to do that. But we had a lot of those kinds of people. So we tried to, I guess, be diplomatic in our comments and wanted to make sure that the city knew what this took. You're talking about your budget, so it'd be nice for a little bit of money in it, you know, for lawn bags and plants, if you want something other than what we can scrounge from neighbors. You know, that's about, that's about what we're doing. We're sort of like scrounging from neighbors. Thank you for your time. I'm done talking, but Leslie, would you like to introduce your kids?
I'm Leslie Price. I'm the social worker at Bangsburg Agna Educational Center. We represent Freeport School District. We are at the Sunson Transitional Education Program, and we're a big service education program, so we like to give back to the community. And these are only a few of our gentlemen that helped. We had a lot of other students that assisted too. This is Jakari Ann Sanders, Floyd, yeah, Floyd Carter, and Christian Segal. Again, we had a lot of other students that helped as well, but they worked in that 100-degree weather week that we had. I think one day it was raining, and we walk every time we go. So I just think that they deserve a little bit, a little bit of praise for the hard work that they did too.
That's all we have.
Well, thank you, Lynette, to you and your entire crew. Hopefully, your sense of community pride just continues to be catching on with other people, so thank you for your service.
I would love to see other people doing this, you know. I mean, it would be not, actually, right now, it's not too bad. And I think that once we got at least that particular area tamed, that's why it's not so bad right now.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Move on to item number eight, which is a presentation regarding the 2025 Summer Reading Program. Amanda Myers.
Good evening. Can you hit the lights again so we can see better? Thank you. My name is Amanda Myers, and I'm the Youth Services Administrator at the Freeport Public Library. So I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about our summer reading club that we had. As you can see, our theme this year was Color Our World, which was a really fun theme to program around and decorate around. And as you'll see, we had a really fun summer at the library. We'll start off by talking about the reading part of summer reading. I kind of like to break it down into two parts, like reading and programming. So for the reading part, we had 523 kids who were birth through sixth grade sign up for summer reading, which is a 5% increase over last year. And of those who signed up, 271 of them successfully completed the summer reading program, which consists of reading either 20 hours, if they're reading like longer books and independently, or reading 60 books if they are being read to, or if they're like an early reader and reading shorter books, so it's easier to keep track by book for them. So our, our finishing percentage this year was 51%, which is down a little bit from last year, but that's okay. Usually, I feel like most libraries are around like 20%, 25%. So I'm very happy if it's over 50%. So next, we'll talk about programming. I feel like Ashley kept telling me, like, it's okay if it's not better than last year, like, it's fine, don't worry. And this year, we ended up with 8,232 people at our summer programs. That includes in-house programs, outreach programs, passive programs, and other programs we do throughout the summer, field trips that come in. So that was a 36% increase from last year's amount of 6,000. And we had 119 programs beginning in June through August 9th. And we offer numerous programs each week for children, community groups, outreaches. And as you can see, ever since we've come back from COVID, our numbers have just been increasing steadily each year, which, I mean, I feel like might possibly, it's going to be hard to beat this year, I feel like definitely. But somehow, we always do it, so maybe it will happen again next summer. These are just a few of the programs we offer every year. As you can see, most of them, the numbers went up this year. The kickoff party was bigger. Slime making was definitely bigger. We've been getting bigger Storytime crowds all year, so our average Storytime kiddos for Storytime and Debate Square was up to like 37 this year, which for us, as a small library, is a lot. And yeah, they either stayed the same or generally went up. So, and now we will talk about the fun programs we had. This is our summer reading club kickoff party, which was on June 9th. And thankfully, this year, we had good weather, so we could have it outside. I feel like the beginning of June is kind of hit or miss on the weather, so we have it inside a lot too. But we had 550 kids and adults come that day. We do, like, the registration is at like the Douglas Street entrance. And this year, our line wrapped all the way around to the Chicago Street entrance. It was like the longest we had ever seen it. And it was very steady the whole time, like, the line kept moving, but it just kept staying that long, so that was really good. We have lots of different games and activities for them to do. We always bring out our sensory table, and this year, we actually dyed rice to put in since the theme was colors. It gave them something bright and colorful to play with. And we also made a little balloon arch inside, and those are some of our littles who were there for Monday morning Storytime, but they wanted to get in on the summer reading club action too. And this is our collaborative art wall we made for the summer. We do a different one every year, and we try to keep it theme-related. So this year, we decided to base it off the book, The Dot, because it's like, this girl doesn't know what to make, and her teacher is just like, everything starts from a dot, and you can make your mark. So we gave them dots at the kickoff party that they could decorate, and we actually used like salad spinners and put some paint in them, and so they got to like swirl it around and make really cool art. So we put those up on the wall. And this is one of the things that actually helped our numbers increase a lot. We started doing scavenger hunts in the library, like, last November, and they had so much fun that when we didn't have one in December, they were like, where's the scavenger hunt? We want to do a scavenger hunt. So starting in January, we've been doing it every month. And these are a couple of the ones we did over the summer. So there's just 12 little pictures. You can see like the watermelon card there, that's what they're looking for. We hide them all over the Youth Services Department, like, by our posters, on the tree, on the shelves, like, wherever, and they have to find six. And if they find six, they get a prize. So it's pretty simple, like, they just get a sucker or a pencil. It's not like a big prize or anything. But this summer, from June 1st to August 9th, we did 1,804 scavenger hunts. Like, this is like their favorite thing, I kid you not. Like, every time they come in, they, they were doing it like multiple times a week too, even though we hadn't moved the pictures. They were just like, let us scavenger hunt again. So I'm like, okay. It's easy for them, well, it's fun for them, it's easy for us, so. These are some of our pictures at Storytime at Debate Square. I love summer because we get to do outside programming. And Wednesdays actually, though, this year, were very hit or miss on the weather. Some of them were very rainy, and some of them were very nice. But we had good crowds all summer, and everybody just kind of brings their blankets, and they bring picnics, and we just kind of go outside and have a good time. We usually do like the sensory table or some sort of dance party, or bubbles, or things like that. And this summer, since our theme was colors, I kind of broke out of my usual summer themes, and we did a different color every week, which was really fun and actually different to do, so it was very fun. And you can't have a good summer reading program without making slime a few times, which is on our monthly program cycle anyway. But in the summer, it gets really, really big. We made some disco ball slime and firecracker slime using Pop Rocks, which actually make your slime pop and fizz and stuff. And then we also made some orange creamsicle slime to finish out the summer. And this year, we had 493 people, including kids and adults, at our three slime days. So the popularity of slime is not slowing down at all. And these next few pictures are from our Make It Monday programs. I love Make It Monday because the kids just get to be, they get to do whatever they want and be as creative as they want. So this week, we made cardboard birds, and as you can see, they all had a different take on it. They just got a cardboard bird that was pre-cut and a white canvas, and this is what happened. And the little girl on the right, she was finger painting and like blending her colors like nobody's business, and we were all just like, oh, what's that going to look like when it was done? Because it was kind of this weird greenish, grayish for a while, but it actually looks really good with her bird that's yellow, and it just kind of looks like a darker sky. And here we have our Button Art Day. We gave them the choice of having a pre, like drawn-out template, so like the hearts and rainbows that you see, those were all templates that we had drawn out for them. Or we just like gave them a canvas and they could make whatever. And as you can see, some of them even made very cool 3D sculptures with their buttons. And this was from our last Make It Monday, which was melted crayon art, which I will fully admit did not exactly go off as planned. However, everybody had a really good time. They all finished their artwork. It turns out, no matter how big your building is, you can't plug in like multiple hairdryers at a time. It just kind of overloads all the outlets. So lesson learned there. We still had, we let them all hot glue them, and we were like, you know, you can just take it home and dry it. But actually, they, we had two hairdryers that were still working by the end, and most of them actually stayed and dried them there. Like, they were in no rush to leave because they were picking out books, they were scavenger hunting while they waited. It was fine. And as you can see, the girl on the left, she's very excited to have her picture taken. So, I mean, it turned out fine, and people were fine with it, even though it just didn't happen quite right. This is from our Messy Art Day, which I will say was very, very messy, but you can't have a summer about color without having messy art. So we did like squeegee painting. We rigged up a pendulum that they could push back and forth and would drip paint, and we did the salad spinners again. And I feel like Erin, my librarian assistant, and I spent probably more time cleaning the patio that day than our actual program was, which was an hour. So, but the patio is all nice and spotless now. And this is from our Bluey Bash. If you're not familiar with Bluey, he is a cartoon dog that's very, very popular with the littles. So we had decided to have like a Bluey party this summer, and he appeals to kids of all ages. As you can see, we have like little littles, and then we have bigger kids. And we had 283 kids come that day. They played games like Heeby Yuppie, which is the balloon game, and dressing up like grannies, which is apparently a Bluey thing that you have to do. And they made some magic asparagus, which turns adults into animals. And this is one of our presentations this summer. It was Fantastic Foam and More from Absolute Science. And the kids loved it because they got to be a part of the show, and they made the exploding foam at the end, and everybody just had a really good time. We also had an animal presenter come this year. It was incredible bats, and they presented their Animals Around the World program. And they must have brought like 15 different animals with them, and they told us like a lot, a few facts about each animal. So they went through all of them in an hour, and then the parents helped hold the animals at the end, and then the kids got to pin them. So there was like a snake, and a rabbit, and an armadillo, and a fox, authentic fox, and a spider. There also was a bat, which I feel like everybody was a little bit afraid was going to get, like, just start flying all over, but that was fine. And we had over 130 people at both of those shows. So those were both really exciting. We also hosted an outside library field day this year. Last year, we did our first outside, like, kind of game day. We had like 25 kids. So I didn't know what to expect. And then this year, we ended up with 68 kids. So that was very excellent. They ran relay, relay races. You can see they did water balloon catching, and they did the limbo. And about halfway through, we divided up the littles and the bigs, because we had a lot of teens too. So the teens played Capture the Flag, and then the little kids played Hot Potato and Tag. So the teens played Capture the Flag, and then the little kids played Hot Potato and Tag. And this summer, we had a really fun new partnership with MatCamp, which is through Hope Wins. And we've kind of always, they've kind of always come to programs sometimes when they could. But this year, they have a home-based location. So we decided that it would be easiest if I just went to them, because they have, like, 50 kids pretty much all summer. So each week, I went and took some books and a craft and/or a project. As you can see, we made slime. They actually came to the Art Plaza, and we did tie dye with them, because everybody loves to do tie dye. And, like, we talked about things like Juneteenth, and we did service dogs when they had the police dogs come. So that was really, really fun. And that girl, making her slime there, she was so excited that day. She was like, are we making slime today? And I'm like, yeah. And she, like, freaked out with excitement. She was so happy. And we also have a partnership kind of going on with the Stevenson County Fair. Usually, I just go do Storytime, but this year, we were asked to do Glow Bingo. And so Ashley and I went and did that, and it was really fun. Couple hours playing bingo with teens, adults, kids. Everybody mostly was super competitive about it, but they all also went home a winner. So that was really fun. And these are some pictures of our End of the Summer Party. Our attendance for the End of the Summer Party was down just a little bit, but it was a very, very, very hot afternoon. And people, usually, people will stay, like, the whole three hours. But I noticed this year, there was a lot of, like, people coming and people going, because it was just really hot. But they all enjoyed their ice cream, they did the bouncy houses, they played games, they got to dunk library staff in the dunk tank, they got to play games. And they just overall had a really good time. So next year, I'm sure you're thinking, what is going to happen? Next year, we are doing dinosaurs. The theme is Unearth a Story. So I am super excited. I already have my list going. I actually already have my first performer booked. We have dinosaur people coming, so we're super excited about that. So that was our summer at the library.
Thank you, Amanda. We will move on to item number nine, which is the discussion regarding municipal electrical aggregation program. Mike Mudge.
Okay, we're going to do the electrical aggregation. I'll be the other delegate first. Okay, just want to make sure I didn't give away my only sheet. I have a question after that last presentation. Who would like to go back and be kids again? It looks like there's a lot of good stuff to do in the, in the community. All right. I, I got a lot of good questions from Councilman Johnson. Thank you. And I'll, I'll address those questions. Two, two topics. We're doing item nine right now, and that's the electrical bids that we got for municipal aggregation. And I'll just do a recap while the heat's gonna be coming up. We had a three-year contract that we secured last, last spring with, or last fall, with Nordic Energy. And what happened was, the capacity, if we can go to the bottom part of that sheet, that'd be great. Part, there, that's perfect. Part of our energy rates comes from, when we have an all-in rate, I'll just use nine cents as the all-in rate. About a fourth of that was used for capacity. And what capacity is, thank you. What, what capacity is, is the money that is collected by ComEd and given to generators. And we're part of the PJM grid, which goes from our area, ComEd area, all the way out to the East Coast and down to, like, Washington DC. It's the largest grid that operates in the country. FERC realized that, FERC is a federal agency that controls all the, all the grid operators, that we weren't, we weren't building enough generation plants across the country. And they delayed PJMs doing auctions. We used to have an auction every year, and it would be a third for this year, a third for the next year, a third for the year afterwards. So suppliers always knew kind of what their costs were. If you look at the second to the right bar chart there, we went from 2024 to 2025, a very low capacity rate that was given to the generators to maintain their plants, but also encourage them to build new plants to meet our demand. Why is our demand going out of sight since 20, from 2012 to 2020, our energy prices were flat? And our prices kept going down. Every time we did aggregation, we would get a lower rate. And that was due to conservation. More generation, that was supply and demand. In 2021, we started increasing our growth. More and more electric vehicles, but also data centers. Started increasing the load, and we weren't adding any new generation to speak of. Yes, we were adding solar, adding some wind, but not, not. And the other thing we were doing, we were retiring, we were retiring coal-fired generating stations at an accelerated pace, because the markets weren't supporting them. And as soon as they shut them down, they pretty well flattened them, just to get out from underneath a cost, the taxes cost on them. So what happened, supply and demand again, when they opened up the, the bid, PJM was, like, two years behind getting the bids out in July of 2024, we got the bids for this. This is after we had secured a rate with Nordic Energy. And they reneged on it, not only with the city of Freeport, but also with Joe Davis County and Riverwoods and Burt Township. We had four communities that they had the low bid, they won the bids. So saying all that, that's kind of the background of what happened to our market. ComEd's rate jumped up about three cents a kilowatt hour also, which started in June. Not only did we have a lot of heat, we had ComEd rates coming up, plus their delivery rates themselves went up. So this summer, we started seeing some huge electric bills, because of the weather, because of the capacity factors kicking in, and so on and so forth. But what we decided to do, I think, is consensus, was to have everyone go back to ComEd till we knew what the new ComEd rate was. That didn't happen until May. But then, we decided to hold off on this a little while and see what, see what happened. So now, we're bringing the bids back to the board, to the council, to see if you're interested in securing a new rate. So if we could go back up to the top a little bit. Oh, one, one thing before we move. The new capacity rates for the following year, from June 26 to 27, are even higher. So some of our bids are taking in that effect. So if we go back up to the top, these are the three bids that we have. And the ComEd rate we have on there is 10.229 cents. If you'll get your summer bill, you'll see it says 10.028 cents. That's for the four summer months. The eight, the eight winter months is a little bit higher. So the average of the 12 months is 10.229, as it stands today. The two bids that we have from MC Squared, they, they make, they make sense. We're not saving a lot of money. We're not saving two, three, four cents like we had in the past. But that's about a penny, a half a cent. And, and if that chart's right, it may add another half a cent, you know, if we go with the two, two-year rate. One of the questions that Mrs. Johnson had was, what does the average person, what would the average person save? When, if, if you move this forward to the, to the council, I'll have fresh bids for you, because this, this bids were on August 26th, and we'll know then. The average customer, that's 634 kilowatt hours, would save at a half, half a cent, .005, $3.17 a month. Is, is that worthwhile? Well, if you look about, if you have 3,000 residents, that's about $9,500 a month stays in the community, you know? And I just threw that 3,000 out, because we've, at times, we've had a lot more people in the program than that. If it, if it goes to a penny, then it's double that, about $6.25 or so savings. The key on the aggregation program is people can opt out anytime they want. There's no termination charge. When we roll out a program, if we decide to lock in a program, everyone gets sent a letter from the supplier, at the supplier's expense, on the city letterhead saying, here's what the community rate's going to be. After our decision is made on the contract, it's then their decision to decide, do I want to be on the community rate, or do I want to go back to ComEd? They can make a choice then. Next up is the second choice. ComEd will send out a letter saying, you're going to be switched to this supplier on such and such a date. If you don't want to, call this number, ComEd number, or call the supplier number, and ask to, ask to get out. So that's the way the program's been since the start. Sometimes, we get somebody that kind of gets caught in, or they didn't get mail, or a different address, or something like that. We're always open to taking the calls and helping customers out to find out, express what, what, what the program is, and what their choices are, and, and let them know the choice. So ComEd's floating rate. If the Illinois Power Agency purchased the power for ComEd and AMRA, the Downstate utility, and they go through their costs and they set their rate, ComEd does not make any money on the power that they sell, and they break even on it. Where ComEd makes their money is on their delivery fees. That's the middle part of the bill. And at the bottom of the bill is taxes and fees. Part of that, on the fees, is a cost of a half a cent per kilowatt hour. I'll talk about that when we talk about community solar. Let's see. Is there anything else that I might have missed on this, on the spit?
Alderman Johnson.
Yeah, I just want to read the questions that I gave you, so people know what I gave you. What is the rate that the city and most residents are paying now for electricity per kilowatt hour?
10.028 until, until October. In October through May, it's a little bit higher than the 10.2, two cents that I mentioned.
Okay. And also, the, I, I'm not sure how you pronounce that. Is it diner, dinergy? And the direct energy have a renewable green option, which is, which the green option would be the purchasing of electricity generated from renewable energy sources like wind or solar. Why are those rates higher? I'm just gonna read all the questions, and then you can answer them. And you explained a little bit what the floating rate means, that, how ComEd gets the money from that. Does ComEd still receive monies from the electric bills? That would be the rate that you were talking about, even though we have a different supplier. And then you explained the last one, based on 634 kilowatt month, a month, which is an average, give an example of what a bill would cost. And you kind of explained that, how many cents higher that would be. So I guess the answer I'd like to number two. The dinergy and direct energy have renewable green options. So why are those rates higher if we do, if we go with a green option?
Because the cost to build the, the solar, even with the subsidies and everything, is a little more expensive. And the wind is a little more expensive. A one-megawatt wind tower, windmill, costs like a million dollars. So without the subsidies, so it's a little higher. Now, some communities along the Chicago area, suburban area, they want to be 100% green community. Out here, our communities as a whole pretty much want the lowest price. So what we do is, we get lowest price. We do get that option from suppliers. If somebody wants to be 100% green, they can opt in and have that option. So if we go with MC Squared, they don't offer that option.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, I, I addressed the rest for you. Okay.
Any other discussion, council? Manager Boyer?
So, council, just at this time, we're scheduled to bring this before you next Monday for the aggregation contract for the community. So this is your time to ask any questions related to this, and make some indication that you do want me to bring this aggregation contract next week. So just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Alderman Johnson, do you have something else?
Can I ask Manager Boyer a question?
Sure.
Okay. So the lowest price on here is from MC Squared, which, one year is 9.65 kilowatt, per kilowatt hour. And two years is 9.85 per kilowatt hour. So that is lower than what ComEd would cost us if we just stayed with straight ComEd. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
But I want to add. No, I was gonna add, next week, we're gonna have different bids. So this is an example of today. Monday, when we come back to approve the aggregation contract, if that's what council's desire is, those numbers will change based upon the conditions in the market at that time.
Thank you.
Alderman Clem.
I'd just like to add that I've known Mr. Mudge for many years in the trade, and also before being on the council. And he's very knowledgeable about this. And if you have any questions, please ask him, because, I mean, he'll tell you. I know some of us went through some terrific electric bills this, this year. And the way it looks in, in the future, it isn't going to be any better. But where I was really surprised when I got looking into the bills was not necessarily how much per kilowatt hour you paid, it was some of the delivery fees and the taxes, and the so on and so forth that you went into it. But, you know, you're gonna pay what it is, but thank you for your, your work on this, Mike. We appreciate it.
City manager, you don't need a motion to move that to the next meeting, right? It's all good? Okay. Well, then, we will move on to item number 10, which is discussing regarding community solar with Illinois Shines. Mike?
Okay. What we're looking at on community solar, and that's a long list of questions. But I'm pleased that people are looking at this and going through the Community Solar of Illinois Shines program. And, uh, community solar. So, 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 so what is community solar? And why am I bringing it to your attention? Community solar is, is solar farms that are built out in different areas where, where it's been able to be connected to the grid at a lower cost with ComEd, but also it's land that the developer works with the owner and secures a long-term agreement. In Illinois, I mentioned that we're all paying .005 or a half a cent per kilowatt hour. Every ratepayer's paying in to the state solar fund. And our governor, he wanting to build more. And our governor, he wanting to build more and more green, green power. This is the way that they, that, that they're doing this. When the CJ, when the CJ Act was passed, that was the bill that pretty much kept Byron Station and the Dresden Nuclear Stations online and continued to produce power force. For me, that was very, very important, because in extreme weather, whether it's hot or extremely cold, the nuclear plants just sit there and run, and they're our base load. When the sun's not shining, when there's natural gas restrictions for gas generation, keep homes and that, it's not that we don't have a lot of natural gas, it's just getting it to where it's needed on those critical days. And coal piles freeze up, things like that. So nuclear, in my mind, we needed it, basically, as a survival. Electricity's very important when it's below zero for, 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 uh, on that. But, going back to community solar, why are we talking about, why are we talking about that? Um, I, I think I'll start into your questions. The community solar, to be able to build, be able to build them, the developers need money to finance them. What they do, once they get these agreements and they think they want to build a field, the next step is go out and get subscribers. And the way the state statute set this up was, your big companies like your hospitals, like OSF and something like that, they're called anchor tenants, Walmart, they can lock in a certain amount of power. And then, the state says, well, 40, 45% have to be kept for solar for all, which means residents and stuff. So a certain amount of power on those fields are, are set aside for residents. What we have is a small sliver in the middle, which means our smaller commercial accounts, not, not all of our accounts here in the city of Freeport. I'm talking about the municipal-owned accounts that are not free service, the ordinance from ComEd. So we look at the water treatment, the water treatment facilities, the wells, things like that, what accounts will fit under the guidelines. So that's what I'm looking at. If we can carve off a few dollars here or there, there's no investment on the city's part at all. These are plants that are out there being built and, and coming online. They're not built, the ones that are already built are already fully subscribed. So, we're, we're trying, we got one coming online in October, we got one coming online in January. I'm trying to get as many municipal accounts in there as possible. Community solar usually gets 10% credits for, for the large customers on that. Since municipal accounts are investment-grade, when these developers go out and borrow money from the market, they like to have good subscribers, and that lowers their borrowing cost, just like, just like going for a mortgage on a home, the, the better your subscribers are, the better the tenants are, the better your rates are going to be. So it's important for them to pick up municipal accounts. So what I'm doing is I'm shotgunning out all of our communities and saying, who's interested in community solar? So tonight, I've got six of them doing presentations, but, but, but I'm here, because I've, I've been talking with Rob for, uh, this and it's kind of last, last spring. And that's when we were involved in all the municipal ag stuff, and that was all blowing up, and he said, "Mike, just put it on the back table for a while." So, so now it's our time on this. Subscription costs zero. That's your question?
What'd you say?
Does energy come from solar farms that are already established? No, those are already fully subscribed out and serving their customers. We are on a waiting list, and right now, I got a short waiting list, and we're able to, we negotiated up to get 15% credit instead of the standard 10. Where does this credit go? It goes to the accounts that are assigned. So I'm just going to say, say, well, number three uses a certain amount of power. That's got its own ComEd account. Whatever those panels that are assigned to that account produce, that's the solar credits that's going to show up on the ComEd bill for that specific account. So what we're doing right now isn't for the residents, and it's not for the communities that sign up, like municipal ag. This is just strictly the, the city accounts that we can get into the program. The city-owned accounts, if you will. And I took off without my savings estimate sheet, but, um, Rob, do you remember about how much I estimated the savings was?
No.
Could be, could, could be maybe, I'm, I'm thinking six, $6,000 a year. It's not a lot of money, but we're kind of, in my terms, these are my terms, we're clawing back some of that, um, RPS charges that we're all paying in, clawing some of it back, and, and putting it back into the water and sewer fund, you might say, keeping those costs a little bit lower.
Is that $6,000 estimate, whatever, nothing we're holding you to, is that per account? Can we have multiple accounts on there? Can we have multiple wells, multiple, you know, wastewater treatment plants, four or five accounts?
They gotta be in the ComEd, zero to 100 KW classification, and that's, that's the total of all the accounts that I was able to, to get. Like the treatment plant, if you didn't already have solar there, it would be too big. City, City of Rockford, um, just signed theirs last week. They have like 40-some accounts, and I think I got 17 of them in there. So, um, yeah, they're, it went through their finance committee, and their council says, yes, let's, let's, let's do it.
And I might have missed it, but I didn't hear you say the term, which I think I've seen at other presentations.
If, if you sign up and you're, and you get in these things, they want to make sure you stay in it at least five years. If, if, if for some reason you want to pull out, something better comes along, or something like that, you have to make up that subscription, unless we find somebody that wants to backfill in. When I say "we," we or the solar developer wants to backfill that in. But this 15% goes on until the life of the plant, which is up to 20 years, ComEd rates, and it's not on our rate. Our rate for, for our, our power, you know, like six, seven cents a kilowatt hour, ComEd rate is like 10 cents. So we're do, we're doing well on the accounts that we have under contract with the city. But this will come back on your budget. Um, and I'll have all the specifics next week, next week, if, if you move this on to the board, the council, I mean. The information on the fires we are giving state's Illinois Shines, it is administered by Energy Solutions on behalf of the Illinois Power Agency, independent government agency. Illinois Power Agency, as I mentioned earlier, buys the power for ComEd and AMRUN, puts it out there, and does, does the contracts and the agreements. So they're established to do that. Then, the Illinois Shines program came underneath their jurisdiction also. They're, they say they're independent agency. The legislator wrote the, wrote the laws and, and, and that under the, um, State Utility Act. What? The IPA administers it. There's a lot of paperwork with it, but, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, it says it's independent, but if it's a state government agency, it's not really independent? What does the state government benefit from this program? Does the state government regulate this program? What are the rules, policies, procedures from the government that regulate it? Does the government set the fees, the amount of credit a person can receive, et cetera? Who determines how much a person saves, if they save anything? So those are all the questions under there, is, is it, it's government-related somehow, right?
Right. Illinois Power Agency was created because ComEd was evolving where they didn't own any generation anymore. So they had to have an agency that says, okay, we gotta go out and purchase power on the grid, or wherever, from the generators, to furnish the ComEd so people have power. That happened in the later, late 1990s and early 2000s, when all that developed. That's what, how the Illinois Power Agency created. They, they, they run it, they gotta run it underneath the law, but the legislators and no other agencies have a hand in it. And anything beyond that, it's, it's, is over my head. Did, did that help? Did that answer?
Sort of.
Sort of? Okay.
If and maybe.
Well, who, who determines how much a person saves, if they save anything? If an individual person wants to sign up for community solar, they can. And, and my next step is, once we get everything else, to evolve that, so we can get subscriptions of individuals, if they want. If the subscription rate is 10%, they will get 10% credit, solar credit, on the ComEd bill. The reason this didn't happen before was, you could not be on third-party supply and then turn around and have community solar. They changed that when they changed the CJ law. The other thing is, you had to get billed from a third-party for your subscription. If ComEd gave you $100 credit from what was produced on the field, then, um, if you're getting 15%, you'd get an $85 bill from a third-party supplier. In June, ComEd started to set up, so they now bill it. So you're going to see that credit right on the ComEd bill. Now, I put my son on this, uh, solar thing, community solar, three years ago, um, because I actually have solar at my house, because I wanted to go through that process, so I could explain that to people, our home office. Um, and it works, but I wanted to try it, because I wasn't going to go out and advocate something that didn't work. So, um, we'll get into the individual stuff possibly next year, if, if, if the city and the city council wants to have a program. And that would be like an opt-in, not an opt-out program. But does Energy Solutions, Illinois Power Agency, gain from this? Illinois Power Agency is tasked with doing the program. And again, the governor wants to build solar up in the state, and, um, this is, this is the way of doing it. The legislation says, um, are we going to pay for it? They already determine that. So we're all paying, like I said, we're all paying into this fund. I, I wrote down in my notes here, as after the questions, uh, it encourages solar development, and we are adding more power to the grid. The more power that we're adding to the grid, our overall costs are going to be kept down. Again, we're going to supply more supply, uh, more demand. Just a matter of point, about 50% of our power is generated by natural gas in our PGM grid, about 19% from nuclear, coals getting down to around 10%. Wind and solar is producing about 1% in the PGM grid. So it's growing, but not at the rate that, that the demand is. Who owns and controls the solar farms and electricity they generate? The developers, the, the ones we're working with is US Solar. One of the reasons we're working with them is because they are building a site about three miles from my home. They have multiple sites. They had five this year, three of them are full now. They've got one coming in on October, and one in January, and then, 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 then later on next year. I like them because they're a vertical company. They find the ground, they get the permits, then the next thing they do is they go out and they get the subscribers, they get the financiers lined up, they get the subscribers, they bring it all together. They operate the fields. And it's not to say that they may not sell it, but the subscriptions are part of that field. In other words, if you have a subscription, you're going to be on it until that field is, is finally closed, or, or whatever. Um, I'm kind of skipping around on your questions here. Does anyone have to buy into this community solar in order for it to work? No. What we're talking about tonight is just strictly the city accounts. And do you have to put something on your house connected to community solar? No. But that brings up another topic. The only way to claw back some of our money from the state is put solar in to your home, that's not metering, you will get S-Rex back. Or subscribe to a community solar garden, and that's how we get, other people can get money back. You're non-for-profits, you're public entities. If you look at solar leases, I, I personally don't recommend a lease for, for anyone. I've not seen where it doesn't cost people, my opinion, it costs people more. They say free solar will come to your house, put free solar in. If you look at what that costs them, it might be negative, and if ComEd rates keep going up in the future, you may start to see savings down the road, but, but, but not, not right it, right now, so. Did I miss anything that you want me to look at?
Um, the one, where does all the electricity go that is generated by the solar farms right now? Where does all the electricity go that's generated by the solar farms that are here right now? Where does it all go?
It's going into the grid, and ComEd is absorbing this power to distribute it out to other customers. For, for the customers that have a third-party supplier. And that was the hardest thing for me, to kind of get my arms around, like, wait a minute, we're getting power from a third-party supplier, and we're going to get power from the, from the solar farm, but we're only paying one bill, and we're getting a discount. How does it work?
Well... Darren?
Yeah. I have a question, Mike. So the city's been approached by one of the solar developers that's, uh, putting the system on the south landfill, and, uh, very similar program, although it wasn't named quite the same, um, but they're as well offering credit rebates, uh, from that site. Is that different than the ComEd sites, or just one of the facilities that they haven't brought on yet? And how does that affect the city's ability on this program?
Each, each developer has, has their own program, and their own cost and fee structure. Typically, they're not going to move off of 10%, but you could ask them, and I'd be very interested in that, and I'm looking, I'm going to run out of capacity. We're, we're, we're getting tight now, finishing out this year. I, I want to find more. So I would like to talk to them and find out what we can get, and see if we can get something negotiated up.
I guess my question is, can we do both?
Yeah, I'd turn you zero with, oh. Right, Mike, so, the, my question was the exact same thing, Darren, in the sense that we have certain city-owned sites, like, for example, our landfill, or our wastewater treatment plant, that all have solar panels, um, the solar fields there, that we then have an agreement with that particular solar developer that put those, uh, solar panels on those specific sites, to which we, you know, are given a certain rate, you know, there. Can we, through this program, piggyback onto that? Or is that an account that then can't be on this community solar program? Say, hey, you guys are already part of a different program, you can't piggyback onto this, um, community solar, uh, program with Illinois Shines then? So you can't have two programs running from this, for the same account, so to speak?
There can be, there can be, um, if I run out of, if I run out of room, and we're going to put so many accounts, qualified accounts on, yes, you can put the other qualified accounts on, on that, it just depends when. They have the same criteria that they have to meet. The anchor tenants, that's, that's prime. If they don't get their anchor tenants, they don't move forward. And some of these projects are a little bit smaller, it's, it, it, that's why now they want to do like five megawatts, which takes about 30 acres, 25 or 30 acres. like five megawatts, which takes about 30 acres, 25 or 30 acres. So you can look at this, you're not obligated tonight, even if you pass the resolution next week, that gives you authority to go forward and get the best deal that you can. Don't have to be through me. But then it's going to be up to Rob or the mayor or someone, or yourself.
Manager Boyer, was there something you were looking for tonight? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Raj.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was that?
Thank you.
Oh, okay. I know it's a football night, I didn't want to take it real long for everybody, but thank you for, there's a lot to cover, lots to cover in a short time, and I appreciate everyone's time and attention, so.
Thank you. We will move on to item number 10, which is the discussion regarding the implementation of live video cameras, et cetera. Chief Schenberger?
Is that above it?
Thank you. Freeport Police Department has utilized Vigilant Motorola LPR cameras at various locations in the city of Freeport and sound-thinking gunshot detection sensors. The use of LPR cameras and sound-thinking have significantly helped PD staff with shots fired investigations. LPR cameras have also benefited PD staff with investigating other crimes such as recovery of stolen vehicles, serious felonies, and retail thefts. In early 2025, staff conducted a presentation on Flock technology at a COW meeting. Later in the year, staff applied for an organized retail crime grant, an ORC grant, and also worked with the lobbyists to request congressional funding to enhance the department's technological resources. Staff learned the city of Freeport was awarded $9,000 in ORC grant from the Office of the Attorney General Kwame Raoul, and $630,000 in fiscal year appropriations from US Senator Dick Durbin's office. The requests for the appropriations were to purchase the following equipment: $200,000 to fund two existing sound-thinking shot-spotter coverage areas for two years, $60,000 to purchase Sound Thinking's resource router program for two years, $69,200 to lease a live-video camera trailer and a radar trailer equipped with a LPR, $28,988 to purchase 20 additional body worn cameras, $9,309.90 to purchase two additional squad video cameras and DVRs, $30,000 to purchase a Skydio X10 drone, $100,000 to lease additional LPRs for two years, and $130,000 for mobile command trailer. Staff has been working with representatives from Flock with potentially expanding our technological resources that will allow officers to be more proactive and improve their response to criminal incidents. Flock offers a three-pronged approach, LPR cameras, live video, and gunshot detection. Flock presented a quote utilizing $9,000 from the ORC grant and the $169,200 from the fiscal year 26 appropriations to add more LPR cameras, live video cameras, and trailer cameras. The funding for this project will be covered by the ORC grant and the fiscal year 26 appropriations. The agreement with Flock would be contingent upon the passage of the appropriations bill. So this is just something that, you know, I'm going to bring forward next week for a resolution. Like I said, it would cover two years of adding additional LPRs along with live video cameras and trailer cameras to help us out, to help us do our job better. Any questions?
Chief, but this is really contingent upon the 26 appropriations passing, so how do you bring that forward now when that hasn't happened yet?
Well, the reason why we're bringing it forward now is because they need, they would like to have, Flock would like to have a resolution passed by the end of the month so they can start with everything that they need to do to get the LPRs started.
So what if the appropriations doesn't pass?
Then we're not out anything. The first payment is due December 1st, and that's with the $9,000 from the ORC grant, and that's, we've been awarded that. So that basically covers, it brings us, it gets us started one month earlier, so that covers the first month in December, and then the other payment will be due after the appropriations, hopefully.
So if we don't get that, we're not locked in for the
Then we're, yeah.
We're just trying to get ahead of the game.
Correct.
Okay.
I just want to get the ball rolling so then we can get started as soon as we can.
Any other questions for Chief?
If it doesn't pass, then how will it be paid for?
If it doesn't, if the appropriations bill does not pass, then we're not subject to anything. We'll have $9,000 to utilize, which will give us about two cameras.
But if you already...
The first payments due December 1st, the $9,000 payment. If the appropriations bill, and I think was that sometime in December? I don't, I have no idea. If that does not pass, I mean, I would say that it's going to, I mean, I would think that it's going to, but if it doesn't, then we have, we're out nothing, and then it was in the contract.
The $9,000 that you put up?
No, that the contract's contingent upon the appropriations bill passing.
City manager, do you have something? Okay. All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Which will move us on to item number 12, which is a public comment. Is there any public comments? Tommy?
Chief, you do a good job working in that precinct. And Jody Miller, you do a good job with Mayor. We saw you at Faddle House on Saturday.
Is there any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Shadell, second, oh, I'm sorry, Cecilia, go ahead.
As we open in prayer, I'd like to close in prayer. Father God, in the name of Jesus, your word in 2 Chronicles 7:14 says, "If my people who are called by my name would humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sins and heal their lands." And also in James 1 and 12, bless is the man who remains steadfast under trial, for when he has stood the test, he will receive the crown of life, which God has promised to those who love him. So Father God, I continue to seek your face on the matters, concerns, and cares of this city. I continue to trust in you and your word, that you will do exceedingly abundantly above all we could ask or think according to your riches and glory. Continue to lead us and guide us, Father God. Take control over this, your city, that we may reap the benefits that you have intended for us, that victory is ours, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Debbie?
Ms. Leininger, did you leave a letter here? No?
No, that was from Alderman Parker.
Okay, that's not to be read into public comment?
No, that was just Alderman Parker. Okay, so we have a motion on the table for Alderman Shadell, seconded by Alderman Sellers for adjournment, all those in